And can you if we could have a roll call please?
Sean Kidd.
Here.
Doug Bryson.
Here.
Bruce Robinson.
Here.
Jim Davis.
Here.
Eric Furborn is absent and excused, and Don Williams.
Here. Do we have any agenda changes or revisions?
Yes, we do. Item number 11, the recess tour, I'm going to cancel that due to rain and some other factors.
I wore my boots.
Well, you can still go if you want.
Okay, great. Minutes, do we have, anyone have the, or everyone have the opportunity to review the minutes? Do we have any comments or changes at this point?
Motion to approve.
No, motion to approve. We have a motion to approve the minutes for, I'm sorry, August 20th, 2013. Second? Have a motion and a second. Roll call. Or do we just the aye and yea and nay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved, or carried, or whatever it is we say. What do we say? Carried? Motion carried. I've got to start paying attention. Okay. For public comments on non-agenda items or matters not involving a public hearing. Being no one in the audience, we're done with that tonight. Five, final orders, resolutions, and written communications. None scheduled. Six, public hearings. None scheduled. Full business. None scheduled. Eight, new business.
Thank you. I've invited Stephanie Reed, our city engineer, to give us a presentation on the Harbor Avenue Improvement Project in the Northwest area. And she will now fill you in on everything you want to know about Harbor Avenue.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Stephanie.
Hi, good evening. So we wanted to come to you and give you the update on Harbor Avenue Improvement Project. A little bit of background. This project area is from Harbor, on Harbor, Northwest Harbor, from 15th to 21st. So from our New Grade Street, past of 15th, to 21st Street, where the Seahorse Motel is. The reason that this project came about is we've had many, many complaints over the years because there's some, a lot of on-street parking, no sidewalks, pedestrians walking on the street, just some little, a lot of confusion and a lot of conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians and bicycles. We also recently had an American with Disabilities Act complaint. When we finished the 15th Street, leaving that intersection at 15th and Harbor, probably still didn't take it to the degree that would, we would have wanted to, to make the most ADA improvements possible. Now, it wasn't part of that project's scope, but it was something that we did get a complaint about and we did look at. Again, just more of a reason to move forward with this project. We also had this, Harbor Avenue, we had it slated for an overlay, so we had some money set aside to overlay this project. And so we, instead of just going ahead and overlaying it as-is, we wanted to take a look at any improvements we could make. If we did overlay it, how would we stripe it? And so, we also, oh, and then we also had some viewpoints that we, our city right-ofways viewpoints that weren't identified. So all these sort of came together, and this is such an important street in our, in our community. Lots of visitors, and we hired Greenworks, which is, it was a consulting firm out of Portland. They do a lot of public involvement and streetscaping concept designs. So we hired them to take us through a process that we could end up with something, and work through all the issues, and end up with something that we could propose to construct. We felt that would bring together as much of the public input as we, as we received and meet our project goals. So we started out with, again, with all the problems I identified, we started out with creating some project goals and objectives. Our first goal was to create a safe, accessible, and vibrant oceanfront street. We looked at developing preliminary cross-sections for Northwest Harbor Avenue. One of the criteria, one of the objectives of this goal was to install ADA-accessible crossings at all intersections. Special attention to, as I said, the Northwest 15th Street intersection. Designate clear routes for pedestrians, bicyclists, and drivers. So avoid confusion, let people know where they, we could anticipate pedestrians, where we could anticipate drivers and bicyclists. We also, as a goal, and we being, this was collected, a collection of input from the neighborhood. So first neighborhood meeting, we, we had talked about these goals, refined them. Again, we feel this, this reflects what the neighbors, the neighborhood told us. Balance the needs of various users, including pedestrians, bicycles, drivers, and adjacent property owners. And an objective for this goal would be to define the bicycle and pedestrian routes, and bike parking areas. Designate on-street vehicular parking areas. And integrate streetscape improvements with private property frontages. The third goal was to enhance the Harbor Avenue aesthetics. We wanted to identify and implement appropriate style of streetscape enhancements. Ones that would, we wanted to go ahead and select the materials and furnishings and plantings, and identify, identify any opportunities for viewpoints. The fourth goal is to link the community to the Oregon Coast. Build on previous planning efforts to realize a community vision for Ocean Lake District. So we took a lot of the previous planning efforts. Didn't want to do something completely different on Harbor, for example, than we've been doing on Ocean Lake. So we tried to integrate the Ocean Lake plan into this design. And also, we have to implement wayfinding signage strategy, and that'll come up a little bit later in terms of letting people know where the parking is, you know, giving more information about what's going on on that street. So the consultant, what I'm just going to do here is sort of just walk you through the two, the two meetings and the processes, and where we are today. So we looked at the project site, again, from Northwest 21st to 15th along Harbor. What we had were overlooked beach accesses. We looked closely at the intersections. We looked at the pedestrian zones. Can kind of see existing conditions of some pedestrian zones. Were pretty clearly defined, some have a lot of conflicts. And one of the, the physical issues here we had were a lot of adjacent walls, you know, adjacent retaining walls, and steep grades. So this is an image of existing roadway cross-section. And I wanted to point out here, we've got 40 feet of right-ofway. So the city owns the right-ofway, it's 40 feet wide. Within that 40 feet, existing right now, we've got some encroachments, we've got some parking that, that's in the right-ofway. Some poles, some hydrants, anyway, a lot of conflicts and things that are in what would be traditionally the sidewalk or the pedestrian zone on the edge of the right-ofway. Even some walls, steep slopes, some currently parking on the east side. Not necessarily marked, but people do park on the east side. The travel lanes are about 15 and a half feet wide right now. And here's another view, if you will, whatever they call this type of view. So the consultant put together, I don't think there's anything new on this, I said, yeah, so... The consultant put together a couple viewpoints to use for neighborhood meetings. And what, now, what I want to explain too is, there are so many changes along this stretch of Harbor. Every block is different. So we looked very closely at the edge conditions and put it on this map to show the variations of the edge conditions that exist. There's no sidewalk. There's lawn and plantings in the right-ofway in the yellow. There's private parking in the right-ofway in the red. There's deep slopes in the orange. There's retaining walls in the pink. There's plantings behind the sidewalk in the light green, and a tall wall behind the sidewalk in the dark green. And there's a driveway and parking lot with no curb. So it got pretty much a variety of, I'm sure there's more combinations, but that's enough. But I wanted to get across to you guys that we, we really looked closely at each and every lot and block, and it wasn't just a, well, it's just one size fits all, you know, throw something at this. One of the key issues is going to be parking, was parking, brought up by the neighbors. Some people feel very strongly that they want to continue to have on-street parking. Some felt very strongly that the on-street parking was taking up too much right-ofway. And we couldn't afford to give the on-street parking as well as meet our other project goals. So we first did a parking lot analysis, and you can see, sometimes it's good to look at from the, you know, from this perspective. The dark here is, shaded pink, are private parking lots. So these are all private for most of the hotels and condos. There's on-street parking that's unstriped, again, on-street parking takes place on the east side right now. Pretty much continuously throughout the street. We looked, we wanted to highlight the off-street public parking the city has invested in and is available in this area. There's two lots. And then we also wanted to point out that we have a lot of on-street parking on the side streets.
If I can...
Yes, sure. Please go ahead and ask questions along this way.
Thanks, this is terrific. It's great to have a visual for this. The off, okay, the one you were just, the on-street parking on the east side of Harbor there. Do you have anything telling us who is parking there in particular? Is it for beach access? Is it overflow? Is it residents? Is it vacations? Do you have anything?
There were some residences who do use that parking either as a vacation rental, overflow, if you will, or, you know, they, they use that part, they use parking. I don't want to say vacation rentals, I don't know if that, they live there, or there's a residence there. And people have gotten used to using that area as their parking. In fact, this area, oh, no, I'm looking at, I'm pointing the wrong one. This area actually has a little bulb out in the street that is, you know, gravel along the street that widens the street and allows a little more on-street, on-street parking. So people are pretty attached to, that live there, that have been using those on-street parking spaces. But the majority is visitor parking that people do, or overflow parking from the hotels and condos.
Okay, and I know, just from my neighborhood, there's a lot of homes that were built, say, especially in the Nell Scott District, that never had driveways, never had garages, and it was always just parking on the street. So I'm just wondering if some of that is, that, would there be, if we'd move forward with taking any of that away, would we be forcing people to put in driveways and such like that?
We looked at, when we did, when we evaluated the alternative for removing on-street parking, there were a couple lots and homes that fit into that category. We looked, we're going to work, we want to customize those few homes that need that on-street parking if we choose the alternative with no on, with no wholesale on-street parking. And really look and make sure we don't put people at a disadvantage, or force them to change their existing driveways. So we're, we're taking that into consideration. I believe, and I'm, I think there's only one or two homes that, that are, would be quite affected if we took on off-street parking away. And, and again, we're going to have a design remedy for that, a proposal, because they can also, we can allow a driveway from Harbor. So maybe they, we can widen that, that off-street parking a little bit onto their own property. But the alternative, I'm going to jump ahead a little bit here, the alternative that takes away parking leaves that curb line pretty much where it is, on the east side. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't recommend sidewalks on both sides. So we're going to, we're going to recommend, one of the givens here that came out of these meetings is, let's focus on sidewalks on the west side, that's where we have the most opportunities, the least impacts in terms of grades, retaining walls, existing parking. And again, I think there's those two homes that really do want to retain their parking on Harbor. But yeah, that was one of the tricky issues as well. You do have options, but those options weren't, weren't constructed that way. You know, the homes weren't constructed that way. So just because it could be that way, again, we didn't want to come in and say, now, you have to spend a lot of money moving or changing because we're going to do these improvements. So that's still to come in the design stages, but yeah, we're, we're very sensitive to that. We heard from, we heard from people. So here we are with the key considerations, and these are the, the main issues that verballed from, from the neighborhood meetings. On-street parking, and the question is, is this critical to the success of the street? Streetscape improvements. What kind of streetscape improvements? How much do we think about enhancements and beautification? Should they be localized, strategic, and opportunistic, or more consistent, unified, and cohesive? Now, what happened with this one is it sort of became a choice of, do we have a lot of block-by-block improvements, block-by-block decisions? Or do we try to make the street uniform throughout? And that'll, that'll become apparent in our two alternatives. That's one of the differences between alternative one and alternative two. A roadway, the lane width, we wanted to identify what a safe lane width would be. At the same time, we didn't want, turn it into a runway. We want traffic calming strategies. We want to be, we wanted to be able to accommodate bicycles. So how would those modes of transportation work? How would we maintain traffic flow without, you know, creating speeding, more speeding? So sidewalk, again, asked the question, thought about what's a comfortable width? What kind of experience should a pedestrian have? And what was appropriate for this site and context? And I really do, I was very pleased with the consultants. We urged them to consider where they were, not just take a toolkit from Portland and bring it in here and say, oh, here's, this would be great. They really did look at the site. We walked the site quite a bit before we even came back to the office and started talking about things. So the question of appropriateness and size and context, that's what we tried to get from the neighbors, too, from the neighborhood meetings. And then again, the amenities, these are where you can start really getting into some costs. But it still also makes a big change in what this is going to look like. The plantings, the furnishings, maybe some special paving techniques. What about street lighting, wayfinding, and the physical arrangements of benches and all these furnishings? So we did end up, by the second meeting, after we took this information from the first meeting, we ended up with two alternatives. The first alternative is what we're calling the opportunistic alternative, and that's the one that retains on-street parking. Check my notes here, make sure I don't miss these. So some of the features here, I'll go up to this slide. So, so we've got some raised table, raised speed table crosswalks here. We extended the sidewalk and retaining wall. There's new roadway striping. Of course, striping would be the case on both alternatives. New plantings, striped parking stalls. So this alternative, this alternative kept the on-street parking where possible. The trade-off for on-street parking is you need to create some bulb outs, or some kind of, you know... These are bulb outs. So, yeah, some people's favorite, some people's, yeah, so anyway. So this alternative looked block-by-block where we could maintain the on-street parking. It did cause some problems, some give, give, if you will, or some take, I guess, over on the west side where we, we want to maintain a five-foot-wide sidewalk, that was our minimum width. We decided five and a half feet. And it would, you know, it kind of forces some of the sidewalk to be a little bow out, you know, kind of not be straight, you know, kind of move around where there were driveways. So it limits, it limits the width of the sidewalk on the west side, but allows for parking on the east side. And if you can see from the alternatives here, if you look at the big picture, it sort of wows things around. You don't have a one-straight road. You've got some sinuousness and curvature, if you will, in, in the road to accommodate the pockets of parking. This, these slides I'm looking at are different treatments for the bulb outs. You don't have to have plantings. There is some use for them. We've got places where, you know, we could put bike racks, and it's a good place for furnishings. It's a good place for stormwater treatment, a good place for hydrants, things like that. Here's just another example of where those bulb outs were planted. Oh, and this one shows the raised intersections. So alternative two is what we, when we called it the corridor alternative, on-street parking is removed, except in cases where we, we, again, we're going to work with the property owners who really need some on-street parking and see if we can have more of a pullout on the back of the curb there. But for the most part, along the road, there would be no on-street parking. We also considered raised, raised speed tables. Now, these aren't speed humps, but there are intersections that are completely raised. One of the choices we can make during the design, but it does add a nice traffic calming feature and allows a place for pedestrians to walk from the east to the west. Because we don't have sidewalks on the east side, we really want to make sure people have a safe way to get to the west side, to get to the sidewalk. Same things were, were part of this alternative. We, obviously, we would do new striping. We would look at furnishings. This includes an 11-foot-wide travel lane, typical, and a five-and-a-half-foot-wide sidewalk on the west side. Bicycle would be sharos. Whatever configuration, the decision was not to try to squeeze in dedicated bike lanes. Just really wasn't the real estate for that. But the sharos would be very prominent, and we would hope this would be a bike-friendly lane, a bike-friendly street. And lot, sharos, sharos can be, you know, they can be pretty effective, too. So, new pedestrian, okay, so... Okay, so these, what this key, what this does is just point out some of the features, but I want to go to the overall, what this would look like. It gives us, even though we, we stuck with the five, six-foot sidewalk width here, it does gives us, give us a 13-and-a-half-foot sidewalk path. So it gives us a lot of room. We can make the sidewalk wider. We can put all of our furnishings here. This one shows some plantings. You know, people don't want to do a lot of plantings, but we certainly would be sensitive to what kind of plantings would be there. But it would be more green. Here's an example of that nice wide, 13-foot wide pedestrian zone with places for benches, bikes, and again, a place to put the hydrants and the poles. Some other treatments like this alternative, this width gives you a lot of variety. And you can also use the whole width for a corridor and make more like a plaza, wide walkways in places where it's appropriate. Another thing I like about this, the thing, the other benefit of this is that we don't have to move the sidewalk around the driveway aprons. We can just keep a nice straight walkway at each driveway. If you start to narrow that, you've got to, you still have to have room for your apron, and you have to work around that during the design. So that's kind of the trade-off. I want to highlight a couple of the key project areas, and I'll apply it here. So this is, again, sort of the whole driver of this was the 15th Street Beach Access intersection. We're all familiar with it. We, we weren't going to severely change any of the grades. We had to work with the constraints and asked ourselves, is there, what kind of improvements can we make in a reasonable amount of construction? We didn't feel like we'd done everything we could, but, and we don't feel, the neighbors, no one felt it was just okay as-is. People, most people wanted to see some kind of improvement there. Got some neighbors who call regularly with near-miss stories. You know, they call the office and say, oh, I just saw this pedestrian, and this, and this conflict happened, or... And so it's got a lot of attention for people who live there, and it's a certain kind of a source of angst. And we, we want to take as much of that away as possible and make at least the intersection make sense, look organized, so that the cars, drivers can at least anticipate where pedestrians might be. Now, if you still choose to do something else if you're a pedestrian, that's fine. But we wanted to mark and best control this as possible. So here's the, the plan that we came up with. This features, well, I guess, just the big picture here is that pedestrians would have a crossing here, a crossing here. So there'd be a cross on Harbor, a straight crossing on 15th, and then a path, a walking path. We have to pull this wall back a little bit. There's no way to avoid that. And then more of a raised crosswalk here. Yes?
I can't see where here is. Do you have your little laser?
Yeah, you know what, I'm, Thor, I'm pointing at the screen with this.
There we go, thank you.
You can't see my screen pointing, I'm pointing at the screen? Okay, so, sorry about that. So here's one, here's the view from here. So we, we would put a crosswalk here on Harbor, a crosswalk on 15th, and then widen this a little bit, pull this wall back, and allow a little, a little better sight distance. And there's a point to where we, with the right, where our right-ofway line is. We're going to be pretty stuck here, but we think we can start to pull out about right here. And this would be the pedestrian corridor, the ADA access to the landing here before you go down the stairs to 15th. So in other words, just a more organized, we're not going to flatten a lot of things, but organize, tighten the sight distance a little bit, shorten the sight distance a little bit. So that three-way stop turns into something that people can see each other, all three stops can be seen. Not perfect, and a lot of more during the design phase is going to be, this is more, this is still at a concept phase. We're going to, we're going to really need to design, get really tight with our design. We have a very good survey, though, and we're working with that to make sure we end up with what we, what we want. This is another key anchor or area of the project that we looked at. We worked with, the owner of Seahorse came and had a lot of ideas. And we all agreed that improving this access was going to be key. Again, not big bucks, but not big, you know, a lot of big changes, but just more pronounced and more organized. So we've got crossing here, crossing here, pedestrian corridor here, really sort of connecting this access to... this access to the rest of the Harbor Avenue. Then, I'm not going to read through all this for you, but, so, to tell you where we are today, so we took input from the second meeting after we presented these two alternatives, and we looked at each of the alternatives against criteria that met, that were based out of the goals. So blah, blah, we went through that. And I'm showing you all this because it was pretty detailed. I mean, these, I will say, this consultant took notes, I mean, you know, notes from pretty much everything that was said at the meeting, and didn't want to miss anything, and really looked at the pluses and the minuses and the issues involved with all of these trade-offs. So what we are going to do now, where we are, is the consultant has pulled together the alternative evaluation. They feel ready to discuss a recommended alternative. We don't know, we're not, we're not there yet, but we're, we will be, we will, we will have a recommended alternative. We still want to get a little more input, and it's one of the reasons we're here tonight. And again, it would just be a recommended alternative. A lot of considerations and changes can still be made during the design, but we do have to decide if we're going to go with sinuous on-street parking or more of the corridor and take most of the on-street parking away. So with that, do you guys have any questions or comments or anything?
Jump in here if nobody wants to right now. Okay. My biggest concern is I'm not entirely familiar with the area. I know the, the beach access there. But coming from the south end of town, I know how precious that parking space is to the vacationer and just the day-use person. Will we be taking any of that away? Will we be denying anyone, that's not the right word, but will, will they have a chance to visit the beach? Will we be providing any more parking in another area that could be designated, say, hey, it's only a block away, come walk down, or the like?
The thoughts there are, if we do take, well, first of all, the on-street parking that's there isn't very well-marked. So it's not being used to its fullest by visitors, I'm sure, because it's not entirely obvious if you can park there or not. So, but, but people do. And again, we talked about how important parking is to some of the people who live there, too, and they want that on-street parking, and taking that away is really hard to do. But we feel that with the wayfinding signs and more clearly designating where the parking is, surely pointing to the public parking lots and the available on-street parking on the side streets, that would, that would mitigate a little bit of the parking that would be lost on alternative to, I mean, on the non-altern, not parking alternative. That's really a hard decision. I mean, that's one that we're looking at evaluating very carefully, because there's definitely trade-offs.
I think it's something we, as a city, need to look at. I drove past, you know, up and down Canyon Drive there several times this summer, and it's one dangerous stretch of road, because there's nowhere to park, and people are just parking willy-nilly, and the same at the 35th Street Access, just up and down the side of the road on a cliff. And I'd sure like to see some thought going into, let's give people more parking.
No, identifying where there is parking, I think is going to help a lot, because as people drive around, if you see a sign that says parking here, we're, we're hoping when we, if we point it out, people will park there. And that that's a way to, you know, striping our existing lots better, or when we're prominently striping where there is off-street parking, or on-street parking, I mean, helps identify where those lots are. And then that area is used for parking, you know? You get your most cars, if you've, if you've marked it, so people, you know, park in a more designated areas and fashion, so you can anticipate. For example, someone can take up, without it being striped, someone could take up a spot for the, maybe two or three cars could park in, but because of the way they parked and pulled in. So it's, a lot of this is going to be during design.
A quick question, because again, I'm sorry for my ignorance of the area, is, are there public beach accesses beyond 15th there? Do we even have to worry about it?
Where we've got is, we've got the beach access on 15th. When is the next beach access, so?
One down by the Seahorse.
And then Seahorse to the north, or, yeah.
About how far are we talking?
To the north. So, so the two accesses that anchor this project are six blocks away.
Oh, okay.
Okay, 21st, and there's a stairway on 21st.
Right.
And then the 15th Street is the one that, this intersection that allows driving down to the beach.
Okay.
So they're pretty heavily-used accesses, both. People are very, you know, the driving on the beach is, is certainly popular. The next, what is the next access to the, the next beach?
I think there's one down around 21st, too. I don't think it's quite down to the Seahorse.
Yeah, let me kind of go back to the, going north is 21st and 26th. Going south?
Going south is not, until you get under the side of the river. There's nothing there.
Yeah, because really, most of these are private, because then you'd sort of go down to the Sailor Jack area from Harbor down south, and then...
Do we have any opportunity for increased public parking along there?
Well, okay, so, oh.
Lot.
Yeah, that was more the question. Okay, so, yeah, so here, did I go again? So here, right between 14th and 15th, we have an area that is right-of-way, that we've paved to allow some parking. So this is another popular designated parking area. And to go back to the parking analysis. Isn't a traditional PowerPoint. They decided to save gigabytes or something, at all, in PDFs. Sorry about that. Eh, where'd the parking analysis go? Sorry. Go to that screen that showed. Because, you know, parking is the thing. Parking was the most topic of conversation. So these, the shaded, these are private parking lots, and we're not showing this lot here. It's not really a lot. It's a right-of-way, it's a wide right-of-way where people park between 14th and 15th here. So, most of the hotels and condos have adequate parking, and their patrons park in their private parking lots. The on-street parking, this is currently what's going on, Don, that's what you're kind of saying, is these are, it's a lot of on-street parking that's potential and that is used. We also have some parking, off-street parking. Now, as you can imagine, people don't want their side streets to be, you know, yeah, you know, turned into a parking lot. So, again, considerations on that. And then we have this informal on-street parking, and we showed that, again, mostly on the side streets, and this is kind of where people tend to park right now. And we'd like to highlight and, and use more and point people to the two parking lots that we have. They're anecdotally underutilized. I don't have any data on that, but we heard that they're underutilized. It's really...
About the one up on 15th Street?
On 15th Street, right. And then the one up further on Ocean Lake, on between 17th and 18th. So, with wayfinding signs and letting people know, hey, three blocks to the beach, right, from this lot, I mean, it's just not that far, especially when you have this commerce area, you've got 15th Street, where we'd like people to walk up and down and visit, you know, the retail that's there, and connect the retail in Ocean Lake to the beach access experience. So that would be the goal, you know, is to help people.
Stephanie, have you given any consideration to handicap parking designations down there?
We, yeah, I mean, ADA being the main driver, you know, one of the main drivers of, of this project, I want to say two things about that. When, I've, I've talked to people who are disabled, and one thing that we do have unique to be able to drive on that, to be, for them to be able to drive down to the beach on 15th and share that experience right there with their kids or their family, whatever, I, I didn't realize how important that was to the disabled community. They are, you know, feel very fortunate. A lot of times, this is their destination of choice, to go to the beach, because they can drive down to the beach. So, that said, it is a plus, and it is a, a lot of disabled access. A lot of people do, do drive down there for that reason. I've even had requests to put disabled signs on the beach, because they only get down there and it's too crowded. I'm like, oh, not sure we can accommodate that. But, and we looked at the disabled, basically, not so much parking, but where we do have parking, and we certainly do have disabled parking, we want to make sure that there's an accessible route from the parking to the amenity. So, you know, 15th Street is accessible from this lot. There's, there's accessible, disabled parking here, and we really felt if we can improve this intersection, and then we give a nice accessible route to at least this landing, we don't have accessibility to this, to the beach, but, and then again, this parking lot, this city parking lot has a lot of disabled parking, plenty for the need right now. We, we probably would consider, if we kept the on-street parking, making some of those on-street parking, you can have on-street parking, accessible parking, parking spots. So, that's sort of the plan, to accommodate people who are disabled.
Stephanie, you, when you were talking about Alternative One, I sensed a reluctance to have sinuous sidewalks. How big a consideration is that, number one?
Well, I'm, yeah, you know, I'm pretty neutral, so the reluctance was, was mostly feedback from the neighbors when we presented this alternative. And then it does encroach a little bit on private property, which we can do, we can work with those property owners to have sidewalk there. But it, it's just a, you know, it's just a different experience to have to go around a driveway apron and be limited by five-and-a-half feet versus along a wider corridor that's straight. Now, there's trade-offs, and there's, this is, this alternative with the sinuousness offers better traffic calming, not exactly sure, you have to slow down and, you know, keep your, keep your eyes on what's going on. So there's inherent traffic calming with the, the sinuous, the paved, the bulb-out approach. But no reluctance, it's really just a trade-off. It's a different experience. As I said, a big, wide, straight sidewalk is, you know, a little bit easier to navigate if you've got kids and dogs and things, but it also doesn't hurt to, as long as you have a path and it's clear where the sidewalk is, I mean, you can, you know, walk that way. So, it's more of a trade-off than a reluctance, you know, really, just, I don't have much, I think both of these are, are really good alternatives, you know? Again, there's trade-offs, but both of these would work, either one of these would work.
What, what's the actual magnitude of parking spaces we'd be giving up if the alternative? Do we count them on actual spots?
There is a, there was a count, honestly, don't have that on the tip of my tongue. We, we will, I think that's a good point, is let's do the numbers rather than just the ske, the sketch here.
Looks like you're talking maybe 20 or 30 spots.
Yeah, 20, probably, roughly, yeah, just by glancing. I'm sorry, don't have that number. There's another on-street parking I want to point out between, on Jetty, between 15th and 16th. I was reminded, we punched this road through, and there's some accessible, there's some nice parking, public parking there. That's, those are actually parking spots that are off the street, but they're designated for parking. I can do that. I can really look at the numbers a little more, so we're, we're more informed on the number of, of spots we're giving up, or where the trade-offs were, and make sure we're not wholesale losing opportunities for people to come and park. We'd like to, we'd like to, in either alternative, we'd like to encourage people to use the public parking lots, you know?
Would, if we were to eliminate all parking on the street, would that impact any of the businesses as far as deliveries and things like that? Or can we give a...
You know, I...
Deliveries.
Yeah, I, deliveries did come up. Anecdotally and based on comments, no one felt that the deliveries would be inhibited with either one of these. Actually, they're, they thought the sinuousness might discourage deliveries or be more difficult to navigate the intersections where there's bulb-outs, you know, harder turns to go up the streets. But I think the delivery trucks, you know, they end up taking a lane if they have to, and that doesn't really change whether there's parking or not parking.
Well, I guess it does, kind of legally.
Well, yeah, shouldn't say that. I just, yeah, I mean...
You know, do we still allow, you know, parcel delivery vehicles to stop and not just, you know, big cargo trucks?
Yes, I don't, you know, I don't know that that would really, because, I mean, if those parking spaces are being parked in, then the deliveries are, you know...
Right, not a big deal. But if we take it away, do we have to make an exception or allowance for things like that? Is it even an issue? I'm just kind of...
Honest, I don't know. We, I will, that, we will, we will make sure we address that and fully consider that, both the number of parking and the...
And wouldn't affect mail carriers?
Access, mail.
Trash.
Trash.
We never think of those kinds. Mail, good question, mailboxes, and, and garbage, solid waste, yeah.
We did some good.
Thank you. Good input.
Well, Stephanie, from having some definite familiarity with that neighborhood, I could tell you, just to answer one of your questions, Don, most of your delivery trucks, for whatever reason, maybe because it's convenient to where they're delivering, they actually park on the west side of the road.
Okay.
When they're, when they're stopping. They'll have, you'll have a semi...
Service that you said.
No, there's nothing on the east. The east side of the road is, is your residential. Your west side of the road is your hotels.
Okay.
So what they're doing is they're usually parking, driving south, but they'll park on the west side of the road and make deliveries there for, probably for convenience, I guess. I don't know. I don't think they're supposed to do that, but that's what they're doing. But I was going to ask, was what exactly is the goal, the objective of the city in, in doing this to begin with?
Well, the objective, I mean, kind of going back, this reminder here for me, too, is we wanted to create a safe pedestrian experience. We felt that there was really some safety issues between a lack of having a place for people to walk, parking wherever, not really organized parking, some speeding, sight distance problems, and a lot of visitors who, you know, kind of wandering around, and a lot of people familiar with the street, like getting through, getting out of the way. familiar with the street, like getting through, getting out of the way. And so with, again, just the multiple safety issues, the ADA complaint that we haven't done all we can on that intersection, where we just improved 15th Street, so the ADA component is certainly there.
So you, I would say that the two main goals appear to be aesthetics and safety issues for pedestrians and in traffic, for that matter, would that be, because in, I'm asking that because I look at the two plans, I feel like, and again, they're, I think they're both much of an improvement over what we currently have. I think that the opportunistic plan, however, I think you're still going to have some of those issues. You're still going to have, when you have on-street parking, it's not going to be as aesthetically pleasing to the eye, and it's not going to be as safe, I don't feel, anyway. So, and that's why I'm asking, if we're going to spend the money to do it, then, if it's feasible to remove the on-street parking, then that's something that I would think is, you know, I'd like, hopefully, the city would consider, is what, exactly where their goals and where they met in implementing the plan to begin with. I think, like you were saying, there are some, there's some good off-street parking on 15th Street, and there's definitely underutilized parking on 16th Street that most people don't even know about it. And you pointed about, I actually walked that road today. There's a lot of cutout parking there that I actually use, that I actually travel on that road a lot on a jog, and of course, I've never seen the car parked there. And I don't know that people are aware of it. I think if you have some kind of, you know, directional signs that point people in that direction, maybe that would, that would help. But, yeah, there are some issues to consider, but there's a lot of bus stops on that road in the mornings and in the afternoons, actually coming down, so...
School buses.
School buses, yeah.
Bus stops, yeah, good point.
And so having those cutouts and depending on where they were going to be, and having the school bus there, that could be, become an issue, too. But there are, again, I, I'll, you know, make it public knowledge, I live very close to where we're talking about here, and so I see the cars parked there, and you, if you are on a bike, or if you are with a group of people or family, you have to walk around those parked cars with your back to traffic unless you're going the opposite direction, if you're on the east side of that road, and sometimes it can be a problem. But I think that's a good thing, and some people brought that up. What are those parking spots being used for? Are there, if there's one or two houses that they don't have any alternative to park, then if there's, and you said there's a plan, and they're looking at implementing the plan to accommodate those people, the only thing is, unless those parking spots are reserved and guaranteed for those residents, there's no guarantee they're going to have them anyway. So if, you know, they put that cutout there, and then somebody comes from out of town and wants to stop at the beach there, and they park, and now this person doesn't have a place to park still. So, and I don't know how you really, you know, resolve that problem. But anyway, I just wanted to, you know, find out what is...
And Richard, is it strictly residential on the east side zoning?
Is it?
You have a, you have a parking lot that serves one of the, I think it serves one of the...
Yeah, there's a parking lot for the Coho, a small parking lot, but I think it's basically all residential except for that.
But zoned residential.
Well, the zoning is...
Ocean Lake.
Oceanfront.
Yeah, on the, on the east side, I think it's the Ocean Lake interior mixed-use.
Yeah.
And then on the west side, it's the Oceanfront. But it is a mixed-use, commercial-type zone, but there are a lot of residences.
Beautiful sidewalk, great walking, opportunity, a place for shops, is that still...
And Stephanie, the, going to, just to the south of 15th Street, on the, on the right-of-way you were talking about there, that's not considered a designated parking lot, but kind of could be, if the city, does the city have any opinion, one way or the other, whether that's used for parking? Do they prefer it to be used for parking, or...
We, we prefer it, we know it's used for parking.
Right.
And the reason we paved it was because people were parking, there's so much gravel, it was a maintenance problem with gravel getting kicked out.
Striping on it.
We, so then we get into creating a parking lot and striping, which, again, during the design phase, we may be able to look at what we can do, because, yes, it seems like people are pretty good to, or you've seen some that...
Oh, yeah, I, and I live right there.
Yeah.
And so, I was going to say, if they're, if they're striped, they can accommodate a pretty good bit of parking there. And sometimes it does, depending on how people decide to park that day, but I've seen it before, and unfortunately, sometimes on a busy day, where a large truck pulling a camper will park and take up the entire lot, parking lengthwise, and then nobody can park there. Whereas if those parking lots, those spaces were striped, they wouldn't be able to do that. So just something to think about.
Definitely. All these are such good, this is good input, and certainly want to make sure we consider all this, especially during the design phase. But I also wanted to let you know, going back to the goals, the next step, which the consultant has been working on, was to look at these alternatives and really measure them against the goals. And that's where we are right now, so I haven't studied that or even necessarily, we haven't given them input, the consultant's input on that. So that is the next step, and when we have that information, we'll be able to show, here's how it measured with the goals, and why, you know, the decision, where the trade-offs really were, what the decisions were, but...
One last question, is if we're going to encourage more pedestrian traffic, do we have facilities, restroom facilities, drinking fountains?
You have them on the 25th Street ramp.
But so far, down on the 21st ramp coming up, is there a restroom for the kids?
Yes. Now, see, that's a good, I'm glad you brought that up, because one of the features of this area is we have a restroom on 15th. Is there a restroom on, on 21st?
No.
So, no?
No, it's just...
Is it 26th? There's one.
Yeah, there's one on 26th.
Yeah. So there is a restroom on 15th. And then again, we have a restroom right here on 17th, in the 17th parking lot between 17th and 18th. So, but another feature that you reminded me of was, we also have some right-of-way, is where the right-of-way goes, the public actually has right-of-way here to the Oceanfront, and we call, we're calling them sort of view corridors. And so we wanted to look at those areas, and maybe we can't improve them all the way to the beach, but at least bulb out some of the sidewalk areas so that there's more prominence, and some of those view alleys can be appreciated by people walking along that area. So, I didn't explain that very well.
Actually, when I look at the improvements we've made on 35th and then Canyon Park there, Canyon Drive, because you can wash your feet off there, you can rinse the dog, you can get a drink of water, use the restroom, they are so popular right now. And I think if that's what we're going to be encouraging as more people come, we need to start thinking in those terms.
Okay. Yeah, this project's scope doesn't include a lot of those amenities. I would, it's great. I mean, this bathroom is, the bathroom on 15th Street's got some years behind it, it's got some problems with accessibility and things, so that improvement would be nice. As well as, like I said, so here's an example of where some of those corridors, we have, show little wide spots in the sidewalks, so people can just rest in view, you know, maybe they don't have to go all the way down to the beach or the accesses, but they can still enjoy the beach view or the ocean view from the sidewalk on 15th, I mean, the sidewalk on Harbor. So, yes, amenities do attract people, and, and you have to make sure you've got...
Several, several years ago, the owner of the motel there at 21st, the former owner, was talking about donating land there for a restroom. He wanted to see a restroom put in there. I guess prime, I guess one reason was that people would come up from the beach and want to use the motel restroom. But he sold the property before anything came of that, but that possibility was being explored, and I suppose it could be going into again. I haven't talked to the new owners about it, I don't think anybody has, but it's possible they could be amenable, or actually, in the right-of-way, there could be room for one, too.
Well, I know it's made a big difference in the Nelscott area, because families can come there now. They can wash off the kids and wash off the dog, and it makes a huge difference when you're put on the back of the car, whether you're going to stay or go home and the like.
And the on-demand hot water's nice, because you don't get that freezing cold water. Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, yes, possibilities certainly exist, and like Richard said, the, well, the new owner, the Seahorse owner mentioned, you know, he wanted to do, he wanted to make his access there in front of his hotel more appealing, so could generate a lot of, oh, and the other thing is, some of the beautifications, we talked to the condo owners and the hotel owners, and they were interested in maybe providing some benches or some art in front of their hotel that blended in with the streetscape, so it wouldn't be a city cost.
What a huge opportunity.
Yeah, I mean, there's so many opportunities.
You just have a continuous sidewalk in front of your business, people walking between two beach accesses. I mean, that's, you couldn't ask for anything better than that. Great. Any further questions, comments? Thank you, Stephanie. That was terrific, very informative.
Thank you. I appreciate that opportunity and the input very, very much so. So we will be coming back. In fact, we'll be going to council shortly with the recommended alternative, and I'm certainly going to consider some of these issues, just to make sure we address them and they're in our report. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we are on to the reports and comments section. Community Development Director.
Obviously, we're not going on the, on the field trip today, but you do have in your packet some materials relating to the Agnes Creek Open Space Trail that was put in as a result of the thinning project, as a course of that. Also, some good news, we just got word today that we got a grant, or we're getting a grant from ODOT for planning in the Gap area, 19th, or 23rd to 32nd area, to do some planning on the adjacent properties there. So we're looking forward to that. It will, their process is a long one. It's going to take, it'll probably take about a year before it actually gets started, but we, we're in the running now.
Exciting. That's exciting.
Yeah, it's really neat. It's a great project, and we're really looking forward to it. It's probably about a $100,000 grant, so we're pretty happy about it.
Well, good job to Deborah for chasing that down, and everyone else involved.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Okay. Our city attorney is not present tonight. Planning Commissioners? Okay. We have public comments on non-agenda items not involving a public hearing. Nobody here, so we're done. So future agenda items in next meeting?
Next meeting is scheduled for October 1st, although we have nothing on the agenda at this point, so it's possible that we will cancel it. We are required by our ordinances to meet once a month, which is why you're here tonight. But as of now, as of now, and also, it's just to be, for Stephanie to give her presentation. As of now, we have nothing, nothing scheduled for the meeting.
Okay.
Maybe do, maybe do some training, so we'll see.
Great. Anything else, anybody? Then we are adjourned.